Okay. Sorry about the delay. Lots going on in finance tonight, so we'll get started. I'll call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council Work Session to order. Lieutenant Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sheldon?
Here.
Crackman?
Here.
Maddals?
Present.
Falchner?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Beresah?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
And President Dulce?
Here. Thank you. At this time, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak? If there's anybody here who would like to speak to the council, please give your name and address. One or two remarks, five minutes. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay. Saying no, we'll move on. We do have a couple of presentations. We have Joe Belido's with us tonight to present the 2022 Year-End Report. Also, we have members from JCC to address the council regarding Dietrich Park. So, I want to go -- we'll go with Joe first. I think he's a little bit -- all right, I got him.
I don't care. That's good for me.
Joe? Are you good? I told him I'd have him out of here before kickoff, so.
You guys are gonna nuts a lot.
Good to see a friendly face.
I know.
I was gonna say old face, but I didn't.
No, yeah, old blinds as well.
Know your face.
Distinguished.
Distinguished.
The floor is yours.
Anybody from the press line?
Joe, yeah, Terry needs it.
That's what happened too.
Joe, can you send one over here? I'll give it to Terry.
Yeah, I got the radio. Thank you. Good to see everybody. All right. I'm not sure what Ryan gave you the last couple of years, but I went back and used my old format, which I've used for many, many years. So, I've given you the status of revenue and expense reports that details all the items in the budget. But the top page here is just a summary of the entire year. So, at the very top, under the Budget section, your adopted budget for 2022 had property taxes and revenues totaling $37,767,000. Expenditures in the budget were $38,488,000. So, you had a use of fund balance or a deficit, a budgeted deficit of $721,000. So, here are the actual results. You started the year, ended 2021, total fund balance of $7,905,000. From that, you subtract out non-spendable fund balance of $1,098,000. Non-spendable fund balance primarily is your prepaid New York State Retirement, other prepayments as far as property liability insurance, and we have inventories down at the Central Garage. Those are all considered non-spendable. So, $1,098,000 was total. Again, you were assigned $721,000 from your 2022 budget towards 2023. So, you subtract that out. So, you have unassigned fund balance to begin 2022 of $6,84,000. So, when you're talking about using fund balance to balance a future budget, you're talking about the unassigned category, okay? So, for the year, your property taxes and revenues ended up totaling $40,285,000. Your expenditures were $39,371,000. So, you had a positive year. You had revenues exceeding expenditures by $914,000, okay? So, that was a good year. And I will point out, I will point out, these are unaudited numbers, okay? There, I know there's gonna be tweaks. There's still a few things I will need to go over with the auditors. The auditors are starting next Tuesday, so this, these numbers will not be final. But this, we're at, where we at today is $914,000, okay? So, for the end of '22, your unassigned fund balance, $9,275,000. Subtract out your non-spendable, $1,177,000. You assign $303,000 towards your '23 budget, $303,000. So, your total fund balance at the end of 2022, unaudited, $7,794,000. Down below, I break down to give you a little bit more information, kind of summarizing categories. So, we start out with revenues. So, I compare your final balances to your original budget, okay? So, your sales tax exceeded budget, you budgeted that one pretty closely. You exceeded budget by only $5,943 -- $590 -- $543. Your EMS revenue was positive. You came in $178,000 over budget on revenue there. Your CHIPS aid, we spent a lot of talk the last couple of years on your ARPA money. You've also received, since I've left, a lot more in CHIPS revenue. So, your budget was very conservative. So, you ended up actually receiving $1,181,000 more in CHIPS aid for 2022 than you budgeted, okay? Other forms of state aid, your over-budget, $987,000. Of that, most of it, $896,000, was money, we still haven't received it yet, but money that will be coming from the state under the DRI project, the illumination project down by the Riverwalk. That grant was applied for, and money will be coming in at some point. I don't, I couldn't tell you when, but anyway, so that, your over-budget revenues by $987,000, other forms of state aid. The five divisions of the Board of Public Utilities, your payment in lieu of taxes from them, in total, were $118,000 over our budget. And other forms of revenue net exceeded budget by $47,193,000. So, your total revenues exceeded budget by $2,518,000. On the expenditure side, you were over budget by 2.29%. But I'll go through the reasons, the breakdown on that. And the salaries were conservatively budgeted. You were under budget on salaries by $643,000. Same holding true on benefits. Your benefits were under budget, $758,000. That would be your ERS, retirement, police and fire, social security, health insurance, workers' comp, those collectively under budget, $758,000. Your contractual account was over budget by $1,045,000. Again, that goes back to the DRI. So, you spent, you spent money to get the money reimbursed. So, the, that project cost about $900,000. So, of that $1,045,000, your over budget on your 400 lines, $900,000 related to that, which you are getting back from the state. Debt service was slightly over budget, $37,000. Your agencies, which would be your Department of Development and the Fenton History Center, slightly over budget, $2,200 capital. So, this again corresponds to the over-budget in CHIPS revenue. You were also over budget by the exact same amount on expenditures, $1,181,000. And your equipment accounts, your 200 accounts, your small equipment accounts for various departments, over budget by $19,000. So, your total expenses net were over budget, $882,000. Combine that with revenues being over budget by two and a half million. So, you had a positive variance for the year, which is very, very good, of $1,635,000. Again, you used $721,000 from fund balance to balance the budget. So, your net of revenues exceeding expenditures for the year is $914,273 on audit. Any questions? I breeze through that pretty quickly. The bottom, I always put just a couple of notes. I think I've already, the highlights and the lowlights, I've already kind of talked about that. But I always like to put things for the council to consider going forward. And the first thing I list there is that you have some contracts expiring at the end of 2024. So, you've got to lease fire CSCA and the other ones following 2025. And I always mention that, you know, we put a lot of emphasis this time of year on passing the general fund budget. And, you know, you definitely need to do, do your due diligence and ask questions. But the same holds true with the collective bargaining agreements. You really need to ask questions and make sure you understand the way you're voting on, because those drive the budget. Your budget is made up almost exclusively of salaries and benefits. So, keep that in mind, especially to the council people there. Sales tax, just keep that, I just put a little note of what, you know, I read in here, interest rates and inflation. I'm not sure if that's gonna affect people's disposable income going forward, but be careful with that when you're budgeting sales tax revenue. Comptroller Denoply, you know, in Albany is talking about some large deficits at the state. Who knows what they may do, hopefully nothing to the municipalities, but they've cut our aid numerous times over my 30 years. Keep that in mind. One positive, I always, you know, put this on there because during my tenure, we never were able to get to this threshold, but the United States Government Finance Officers Association guideline for unrestricted fund balance is two months' worth of your general fund expenditures. So, of a $40 million budget, you're talking about 6.7 million. So, you have that now. So, you have a unassigned fund balance that exceeds that. So, that's positive. Again, as you're looking towards next year's budget, miscellaneous revenues, you all the small revenues, as you go through your budget book, those are pretty flat. You know, I know parking is, you know, kind of a big, big issue. That's something, you know, just to point out, you know, you need to look at as well. I'm not sure if you're aware, but, you know, we have an actuarial report done every year under GASB 75 requirements for our financial statements. That comes up with the future health insurance costs, and that number is still a large number for the city, $185 million. Be cognizant of that. Again, those tie in with the collective bargaining agreements that drives that number. And lastly, I'd, you know, just point out, New York State Retirement costs, still a big number in this budget, $3.6 million. My last report to the City Council was $1 million less than that. So, they've gone up $1 million in just a few years. Plus now, for a while, rates were decreasing. Rates are now increasing. So, you know, so again, you need to be cognizant of that. And again, those tie into future collective bargaining agreements. You know, salaries go up, and as you return, the rates will drive the return cost even higher. So, just some, you know, things that I always like to point out that you should be thinking about as you move forward. Are there any questions?
Are we gonna get a risk slap if we're over a million in our spending?
No, no, because I think.
Seven, it says two months.
I think, no, no, don't fix it. No, you're probably nowhere new. I mean, that, that is just a guideline of the United States Government Finance Officers Association. It's not really, I know the school districts have a specific fund balance, a percentage percent. Yeah. The cities, because I never had to worry about it, I wasn't really aware of 10% as well. So, I don't, yeah, you're fine. I don't think that's a problem. Anything else?
I also believe that there's a need for an executive session under personnel.
Need to go under executive session to discuss.
And we would like to have.
With no action to be taken.
No action to be taken, just Joe and Jen and City Council.
Carol. Carol.
And Carol.
You need a second.
So, like that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's just a very.
Chairman and City Council.
Carol.
Carol.
And Carol.
I can talk. You need a second.
So like that. All the favors?
I.
All right. It's just a very, very.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Good night.
You can change out your suit, put your belts here on.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have our other presentation tonight by Jamestown Community College about their plans, potential plans for the stadium, and updated council. I had sent some of the questions to you last week, and there can be other dialogue or debate, but I'll leave the floor to Dr. Demarte and his staff.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes on your schedule this evening. I have with me Maria Kinnberg, I think you know her, Executive Director of the JCC Foundation, and Mr. Steve Adella. We've been in this conversation for three-plus years now. Appreciate the opportunity to come and provide an update and answer some of the questions that you may have with the proposal. So here to discuss our proposed athletic complex business plan, I'm going to assume that you all have seen the business plan. I'd like to spend time going over the plan itself. What I'd like to do is just recap some of the highlights. I know you have questions. I've got a handout, the response to the questions that you shared with us. So I'll share that with you and then open it up for any questions that you have. So to recap, the project we are proposing is for a multi-sport venue in Dietrich Stadium. The multi-sport venue would include a three-in-one turf, soccer, baseball, and softball. Although as of this morning, Maria and I heard a second proposal from CPL, and they have a slightly different take on what could be done there, and we'll share some of that with you. It wouldn't necessarily be a three-in-one, it may give us some additional capacity. But the scope of the project is approximately the same. What we're proposing would include renovations to the stadium, and it would require your transfer of the stadium, the ownership of the stadium from the city to the college. When we work through this, we'll have some renderings to share. The cost of the project from Young &amp; Right, and we have updated numbers from CPL, is 30 million and change. The way capital projects work for community colleges at SUNY, we receive half of our funding for an approved capital project from the state, and then the local portion, the remaining 50 percent is shared. And typically for us, that means that the county picks up 25 percent, and the college and the foundation pick up the remaining 25 percent. So that 30 million, 15 would come from the state. The county has indicated if we want to move this project forward, they would entertain bonding, their 25 percent, and then the college and the foundation would be responsible for coming up with the remaining 25 percent, roughly seven and a half million for each of us. In the business plan, I provided some assessment of what we see as the risk if, for the college, we don't begin to upgrade our athletic facilities. And if we're talking about the stadium as part of that, there may be a risk for the city and the county as well. For the college's part in this, if we do not upgrade our athletic facilities, whether that includes the stadium or not, if it's just our fields and facilities on campus, we're at risk of losing the current students we attract to the college. And right now, that's about 160 athletes each year. We attract enough athletes that come to JCC that, in effect, we fill one of three residence halls. So if we did not have the athletics, I don't have the confidence that we would fill all three of those halls, which would lead to another conversation. So the starting point for us then is losing not only those athletes and the FTEs, but the impact on the residence halls. By having athletics, it increases our ability to both recruit and retain students, where students don't just come to play the athletics and be on the teams, they come and watch and participate in other venues around athletics. And of course, we attract students from outside the region. So the demographics in this region have been, for some time now, we've been losing population. One of the ways that we counter that, the college is our ability to recruit students from outside the state and outside the country to JCC to attend college and play athletics and join teams. As far as the impact on the city, I'm assuming that if nothing were done to the stadium, that that would, in time, have an economic impact on the city. And so one of the things that we bring to this conversation, if we were to move it forward, is the funding to renovate the stadium and make it that destination, not just for our students, but for the city of Jamestown, the county, and the region. This is more of a destination project than a project that would be just for the college. That in a nutshell is what we are proposing. If we were to move this forward on the current timeline, we wouldn't see a facility ready to go until earliest case, the fall of 2025 or early 2026. And that information is six months old now, so I'm assuming that that scale will continue to slide. We've been following the county's capital project timeline up to this point, and we've reached the stage in the process where we can't go any further until we know where you stand, what your thoughts are in moving this project forward. I know you had some questions, many of them are answered in the business plan. For those questions that are not answered in the business plan, we've gotten covered on this handout. And I've asked Maria to share renderings and some of the support we've received up to this point in working our proposal through the current process. Maria.
Thanks. I hope you don't mind, I'm just going to pull up this chair, sit down while I talk to you. Thanks. We met with many of you several months ago, but I did bring just a couple of copies of the Young &amp; Right proposal, so I know that the vast majority of you have already seen that. And I am reminded, looking around this room, that I have sat in your seat before, not as a city councilperson, but as a county legislator for 12 years. And I understand the difficulty in weighing different proposals and projects. And I am recalling, and Teri, I bet you remember this, and Steve, I'm sure you remember, one time we heard, many years ago, because I've been out of legislature for a number of years now, but many years ago, we heard a proposal by a group that wanted to come in and open a plant that would produce parts for electric cars. And it was a proposal that was going to be in the North County, a lot of debate in legislature, and many of my colleagues laughed and scoffed at the idea and said, "Electric cars, that'll never catch on." So, at least with this project, it's a proven entity, so we don't have to worry about if athletics is going to catch on or not. So athletics is here, it drives a lot of the college, and Dr. Demarte talked about the 160-plus students that we have every year that are directly involved in our athletics program. What he didn't mention, and it is in the business plan, is that that drives millions of dollars in tuition and fees. So you might think that in the scope of a college, 160-plus students might not mean a great deal, but it does, it's millions of dollars in revenue for us. So we're really approaching this project as a transformational project, not only for the college, I mean, there's no doubt about it, we need to upgrade our athletic facilities at JCC. Many of you are involved in athletics at one level or another, and you're familiar with the athletic facilities that exist in this county at the high school level. The vast majority of the high schools have far superior athletic facilities than the college. So we are trying to attract student athletes to the college, and they are coming to us from high schools where they're playing on turf, they're used to turf. They come and look at our field in the back that we call a soccer field, and it doesn't stack up. So when it comes to student recruitment, it is a huge factor, that we don't have the athletic facilities at a collegiate level, so we need to do that, but just for Jamestown. I mean, we all know, I was born and raised in Jamestown and lived here my entire life, as have most of you, and baseball has always been a huge draw in Jamestown, and we recognize that, we appreciate that, and we want to continue to build on the legacy that Jamestown has always supported when it comes to baseball. So we do have, and I just have six packets of these, so if you want to pass them around, I can share more if you'd like, but we have collected some letters of support from various organizations in the city and the county, who, like you and like us, understand the importance that a facility like this would have, the impact that it could have for the college, for the community, for the greater Chautauqua County region, and I'm sure that you're going to recognize the names, the authors of these letters. I also wanted to share with you that we did sit down with CPL today, just today, they brought a second proposal to us, and I think it was one that was quite interesting. When we first met with Young &amp; Right, and again when we met with CPL, we told them that our main priority is to have as much turf as possible. So we have a lot of teams that play outside, and they need to be able to practice longer than they can right now on grass fields. So because of the Western New York weather that we're all familiar with, time played on a traditional grass field is extremely limited, and we need to be able to expand those seasons in both directions. So CPL came up with a very different concept, and I think that it's one that will speak to a lot of people because it preserves Dietrich Park as a baseball stadium only. It does convert it to turf, but it's not a multi-use field, it's a single use. So the look and feel of Dietrich Park would remain the same, and I think that there are a lot of people in the community who feel very strongly about it. In addition to putting turf in Dietrich Park, there would be a multi-use field in what is typically called Stadium West, so that southwest lot outside of the park would be converted into a soccer field with a softball field in lane. And then our current soccer field on campus would also be converted to turf. So we would end up with three turfed fields, one that would be multi-use. So that would certainly allow us to attract more to the area, it would actually be an athletic destination. We still think that putting the three-in-one field in Dietrich Park would create a destination for both athletics and recreation, but this would give us greater flexibility in that we could have games happening in multiple locations, obviously at the same time, which we wouldn't be able to have on a single multi-use field. So we're very interested in continuing the discussions with CPL. The nice thing is that that price tag was less than the Young &amp; Right, so they were looking at about 27 million, and that, again, would include three fields that we could be, I'll be playing on at the same time. So we have always looked at this as a transformational project, as I said, for the entire community, and our hope is that we can use these facilities for more than just athletic contests. I mean, we envision working with any entity that wants to work with us to do additional programming. So the Boy Scouts have indicated programming that they would like to do there. We've had some initial conversations with other organizations that need event venues, that don't have event venues right now, and you can think of some very prominent ones right here in downtown Jamestown. So hopefully, the use of these fields will extend well beyond athletics. But again, these fields would allow us to have tournaments, would allow us to have youth and young adult camps, it would allow us to do a lot of things that we can't currently do, and most importantly, we could also continue the leases that the city currently has with other entities like the TARP Scouts. We've had extensive conversations with the TARP Scouts, in fact, they invited us into one of their board meetings, we had a great conversation with them, and I think that many of those board members are excited about the project as well. We would, of course, always want to have a Bay Harbor World Series, there's a long history of very successful World Series here in Jamestown, and we would want to continue that and do everything we can to promote it. So again, we are not looking to limit in any way what has traditionally happened in Dietrich Park, we want to withstand upon it, in a way that is good for the college, for the city. I can imagine that the transfer of ownership is probably an issue that you're talking about amongst yourselves. The nice thing about the transfer is that it allows us to draw the 50 percent from the state. So when you're talking about a project of this magnitude, 50 percent is a lot of money. So yes, there are other ways to fund this, but if we can do it, drawing 50 percent from the state, we would like to do that. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we've done so far, the discussions that we've had, and what we're hoping to do. So we are not in any way tied or wed to any one concept. What we know we want to do is develop athletic fields, we know that we need turf. Dietrich Park is a fantastic facility. Western New York weather is such that during the collegiate baseball season, it is still snowing. So snow on grass really doesn't work for a baseball game. So while we have always appreciated and valued the relationship that we've had with the city and the work that the City Parks Department does in the stadium, they can't do anything about snow. So they're bound by the weather conditions, just as we've been. So this would help with that. Unless it is actively raining or snowing, you can be playing on a turf field. So we would all, the college, the city, we would all be given much greater use out of the facility. I'm happy to answer questions, and we do have a couple of copies, did you bring some copies with CPL? I have one with me, I mean, we can leave a couple of copies if you'd like to look at the CPL design. They had some really interesting concepts that I thought, thought were nice.
Maybe you can.
It is.
Maybe copies can be made off you would.
Okay. Yeah, it is completely different. Young &amp; Right, and not trying to follow their own, we only talked to them about the redevelopment of the stadium. So they gave us their best concepts for the redevelopment of the stadium. When we met with CPL, we did start to talk about other directions that we could move. So they came up with a more comprehensive, at our request, they came up with a more comprehensive plan that again provides us with more purpose.
I just jotted some questions down just now, I'll fire off at you. Are you asking us, this body, to transfer ownership before your funding is absolutely secure?
Well, I think we would be, and am I allowed to field that one? If you want to. I think that we would.
Because it sounds that way, you want us to hand over the stadium before everything is.
I think, and Steve can, if you want. We had talked about there being, you know, an understanding that the ownership would transfer when the funding is lined up. The most difficult thing about this is we're trying to work with the county's timeline, the city's timeline, SUNY's timeline, the state's timeline, and the college's timeline, and they're all different. So nobody wants to be the first one in. So I think we're looking at an agreement that, and the other thing, Mr. Russell, we would not want ownership without having the funding lined up. So I mean, that's a two-way street. I'm sure you're not going to want to turn over ownership when you don't know the project's going to go, and we don't want ownership if we know we can't get one. So I think we can enter an agreement that would have stipulations.
So you're looking for, basically, a commitment, is what I hear you saying, correct?
We are hoping that the city would be willing to transfer ownership if and when the funding is lined up. Is that fair?
Yeah, I'm Steve Adella, and some of you clearly know me, but I was the county attorney for several decades, and so I come at this in part with my former county hat, so I retired from that position, but I also have represented JCC for about 15 years. As Maria mentioned, there would be several steps needed for what's being talked about conceptually to happen, and I think what probably would be, end up happening would be, it might at first involve statements of engagement. it might at first involve statements of intent to show that there's good faith interest in moving forward, and then potentially an agreement with conditions. I saw some of the questions that were posed, which included, would state legislation be necessary? The answer is yes. And typically, state legislation of this nature would authorize the parties to proceed. It wouldn't mandate or be the final decision. It would be state legislation that would authorize the city of Jamestown to convey the property to JCC. Now, all of this is in the backdrop of, the city, as you know, is one of the three sponsors of Jamestown Community College and appoints two persons to the Board of Trustees and has a long historical, and continues to have a long historical status in the college. So, I think this is not unlike when regionalization of the college took place in that the city had been the sole sponsor, was responsible both financially for really the whole operation of the college, and was able to have the two counties, Chautauqua and Cataragus, join in and turn it into a regional college. And I think that was a very complex transaction. It happened in the 90s. I mean, not to date myself, but I was, I was involved at that time as county attorney in that transaction happening. And there were lots of similar moving parts to bring the state, the city, and the two counties together. And I think this would be a similar project. And so, initially, what I think the focus is best needs to be is, is, is trying to come up with what would be the concepts that would allow both the city, the county, and the college to harness all of this funding to create a, a state-of-the-art facility, but then also work through the state legislation, through agreements or otherwise, to answer and address all of the interests of the city, the county, and the college to make it, you know, a win for all three parties. I mean, that, that would be the goal. And, you know, certainly, I think from the city's standpoint, it would bring two partners, which it's already tied with the county and the college, into the stadium as a, as a destination, as a community asset. And would help, in that regard, the city to not be alone in being responsible for future capital upgrades to the facility, which would, you know, solely be the city's responsibility. So, I think there's a lot of promise and potential excitement. I certainly know there's a lot of questions and interest to address. But I think, you know, with, with the regionalization of the college, that existed too, and I think it ultimately came out really well. And I think that's, that could happen here too, if the city and the county and the college join together to work through it. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions as well from a legal standpoint.
That's a good segue, I guess, for my next question. I'd be out of town was, if you can answer this. Who have you spoken to at the county level that has, in your words, indicated willingness to bond? Have you talked to PJ Wendell? Have you talked to legislature? Who have you, who have you spoken to about this quote willingness to bond?
So, over the last three years, we've spoken with, we watched the full county legislature, and most recently PJ Wendell, Peter Shagnon, and others.
So, you're saying it's the people you just listed are willingness?
They've indicated a willingness to bond.
To, to push forward with this project?
If the city is willing to indicate their interest in transferring ownership.
Because I spoke to PJ a couple of months ago. He said that no one had reached out to him. He hadn't talked to anyone. He kind of sounded like he didn't know what was going on with this project.
He's been at the table many times, I guess.
I guess I'll have another conversation.
Thanks, Steve. Happy to join you.
Steve, and Cat County involvement at all? Even though they're a third of the partnership with the college, are they been surprised of the project?
To some degree, they have been, certainly through the board members from Cat County. What has developed over time, though, with Jamestown Community College and its capital projects? The two county sponsors are responsible for the capital projects within their own borders. And in so, Cataragus County itself would not have any financial responsibility. So, generally, there's been deference to the other county as to the college capital projects that happen within its borders.
I noted on the plan, the, and I brought this up before, the soapbox track. That is, it just says it's gone. It doesn't say where it's gone to. And that was dedicated property to that specific program. And the family that donated all of that, I don't believe has any knowledge of what the proposal is to where it's going to go or what would happen. It used to be done on Baker Street. It would be very dangerous to do that on Baker Street, which is why they put that track where they did it. So, has there been any commitment of where it will be moved? Because that is, you know, considered part of the park? And what was the plan?
It's not being moved.
No, it will remain.
Well, at least on that point, it says it is. So, maybe that's not the right one. But on that plan, it's got an arrow. It says it will not be here unless I'm spread there.
On the CPL one?
The other one was handed out. It's got an arrow that says it's.
No, we talked about it.
Yeah, it remains as is.
Okay, it'll stay right where it is?
Yes.
Because on that point, that's.
When we worked, initially, when we were talking with Young &amp; Wright, they had also identified other areas in the same location where it might be moved, but it could remain where it is. They knew that it was important that it remain.
What's the timeline in terms of what would be the next step? I mean, obviously, we're not, we're not, there would have to be some sort of legal agreement if that was the, so how is that? What would be the next step? I guess we'd.
Aren't the next step for us, if we stay on the current timeline with capital projects? We've got to submit our request for this coming year to SUNY by December 8. So, in order to keep this on track, the indication of interest in transferring and the county's willingness to bond, we would need to collect that and submit it as part of our proposal.
That was my other question. Given the state's projecting a, a, between 12 to 15 billion dollar deficit, do you really anticipate that this funding would be allocated in the next budget? I mean, just given we have a hospital in the north end of the county that people are funding for funds, just all of what's going on. I mean, we're anticipating we could get a state aid funding cut. We don't know, but we could. Do you think this is really going to be a project that they'll take up and that the legislature's going to move forward and attempt to do this?
Your guess is as good as ours. But we know, listening to our CFO, that there has not been a project in the last 10 years, a capital project requested by a SUNY community college or a four-year that we know of that was not funded. And SUNY is aware of this. They've been tracking, and they've been in occasional dialogue. So, they know this is, this is being discussed locally.
I know there was some discussion with some of the other council members that I had, but there was, there was talk that the city would still have to maintain the stadium for a period of time even after the transfer. We would still have employees down there, and we'd still be taking care of things. So, that would, obviously, that would cost us money to be, to do that. Is that still in your plan now?
To be discussed. But yes, when we started this conversation with the former mayor, in that conversation, at the time, we had requested that the current FTE remain in place for a period of time, three to five years, until we could assume the operation. How that conversation looks moving forward is for us to determine. And I'd like to have that conversation.
Any other questions?
One other one. If the legislature does not approve this as, that it would not require park alienation, then where do you go from there? If that doesn't pass, if they do determine, I, I know people have had conversations with Mark Thomas, who used to be the former county exec, who also was head of the state parks. And his assessment is it would require alienation, so that other land would have to be set aside. If they don't approve it, then where does that, this project? If they can't, can't move it forward to the association without the alienation and it would be assigned a land?
Well, I mean, alienation would be referring to, I mean, the transfer of the property. I think what you're asking is, you know, would there be a requirement to replace the apartment? And, you know, I think, I think that's highly unlikely, given the nature of the transaction. And frankly, that's up to the state legislature. And I think the key would be the city and the county and the college getting behind the project, which would clearly result in increased use of this land for parks and recreational purposes. Not less, much more. And so, I think, you know, at some point, common sense has to enter into the equation that, you know, this complex will, will be able to serve the community from a parks and recreation standpoint, much greater than the current facilities.
But the question comes up, well, I totally agree with that. In the concept, the question comes up, it's no longer a park.
Yeah, it's a college.
It's, it's no longer the city of Jamestown. It's no longer, so that, that's the legal question that we have. Even though, yes, it'll be used, it'll be the college's facility that the city and other entities can lease or use or whatever. But it technically would not be part of our park system anymore and our property that we own. So, that, that's the question.
That's right. And that's, that's why state legislation is required. But the state legislation could authorize that.
Enhanced, but I guess that's the legal question is that, it's just like taking Bergen Park and selling it to another entity, and they still use it as a facility, but they don't own it anymore.
Right. But I think it's within the state legislature's authority to do that. I think a key difference of this from other alienation situations is it's going to still be owned by a public entity of which the city is one of the sponsors. I mean, that's, that's very different. And city residents attend Jamestown Community College. You know, I mean, I think the state legislation would be used to answer the questions, address the interests of taxpayers and the government, the local governments, and the college to make sure that, you know, the public need is, is kept and addressed. So, I think, you know, just past projects that are novel, you know, it's easy to get caught up in, you know, thinking about all the reasons why there might be a difficulty or trouble in getting them done. And I guess what I pride myself on as county attorney was, you know, the elected officials decide policy and decide what, you know, their goals and projects are they want to do. Then it's, it's up to me and other lawyers and municipal lawyers to, to find the way to get it done. And that certainly would be what we would be, be doing. So, I think ultimately, if any project has great merit, you know, the legal issues can be overcome.
Well, the one legal issue I think you will meet is, I don't think a union for the city would likely approve of working for the college and vice versa. I don't think your college union would like a city union working on your property. I think you're going to have some, some potential issues there if that's in the plan.
Again, it's, you know, it's one of the issues to be dealt with. But public employment relations law in New York, I mean, there's, there's precedent for what happens when one entity takes over, one public entity takes over the public property of another. And so, there's, there's ways to work through that process.
I agree. But that's a 17, maybe 15-person department as of today, potentially 17 next year to leave staff down there. I can see their union and the taxpayers raising a stick because the normal parks things in the city won't get done.
So, if the, if the state legislation didn't fall into place, where does that leave this project? Has it been in the water at that point, the path forward? If, for some reason, that legislation can't happen?
Well, the SUNY and the eligibility for capital funds, the 50%, is dependent on the college being the owner of the property. So, the SUNY funding piece would be lost for anything that is proposed to be done on what was, you know, what would remain city property.
Well, what I hear you saying is that if all the entities are involved, obviously, it's more likely that this is going to go through when they see it's, it's a joint effort and everyone's involved and everyone's on board.
Absolutely. So, I think, so all of these issues mentioned, including the collective bargaining piece, I mean, yeah, all of those have to be worked through to arrive at a, I think, that consensus.
Much like the YMCA was the same thing with that. They were trying to get everyone on board, including a commitment from the city in order to get their funding.
Is it as simple as a memorandum of understanding? Is it after votes taken? Or what, logistically, what is it that you need by the 8th? Just a vote by our board here?
You know, I guess I'd.
Ideally, I should, yes.
Well, I think ideally, you know, a statement of, of interest and intent by the city in pursuing the project. You know, I think we would have to check with SUNY officials as to whether, you know, a letter from, say, the mayor and the council president would be sufficient to advance it at least into an application process. And speaking to our state legislators, a letter alone would be sufficient to at least start the process in investigating the, you know, what the state would be looking to see to develop the legislation.
And I would need to share that with PJ and the county legislature.
All right, well, some session. If we move forward, we'll have to check.
What would be needed if we were interested in doing that? Be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on. Committee reports.
Sure. Obviously, the one piece you heard already, and that was the discussion with Joe about the 2022 budget closure. We had one resolution, and that is to lift the hiring freeze to fill a vacancy in the domestic violence advocate position in the Jamestown Police Department for the remainder of 2023. The estimate in your attached backup is $3,000. It is a funded position in the 2024 executive budget that is also in front of us for $36,000. We had the budget discussion, and that was it.
Marie, how's it?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had kind of a.
We had kind of encapsulated a report of the accomplishments of the Department of Development. In the, as of November first of twenty twenty-three, there were nine hundred and seventy-six code enforcement and zoning cases that were split between two code enforcement officers. The director was highly complimentary of the two individuals. As of November fourth, twenty twenty-two to November fourth, twenty twenty-three, there were three hundred and seventeen completed cases by two code enforcement officers, Ryan and Bronson. And it was amazing how much was actually done by those two individuals. We anticipate when the additional two code enforcement officers, who are doing outstanding in their program, passing all the tests, will be able to start in December to start handling cases. She indicated since they will be new and to make sure that all the notice of violations are completed, that their cases will be reviewed by more seasoned, by more seasoned code enforcement officers. And once they've really gotten their feet wet, they will begin handling some of the more difficult cases. So, we're not going to, it won't be a fire by baptism here, or baptism by fire, I should say. So, we're hoping that, given how many the two individuals have been doing themselves, this will really speed things up. It looks like everything's going along well with that. We did talk about a couple of fires recently, the one on Water Street that occurred last night or this morning, or, excuse me, uh, yeah, the most recent fire. And in that case, um, the landlord was very cooperative, was able to board up the building. And, um, there was only, as far as we know, one individual displaced, but the landlord had been working on that building. And it's unfortunate that the fire did occur, but it does not look like it's an unsafe structure and it will not need to be demolished. Unfortunately, the ones that occurred on November seventh on Broadhead, one of the properties had been condemned. We're looking at trying to move that up, um, and do a controlled demolition to get that property down as soon as possible because it is considered unsafe. They don't want individuals going in or out of the building because there are some other structural issues and we're fearful that someone could get hurt. One of the properties, also on Broadhead, back taxes were owed. They look to be starting the legal process and hoping to get some of these properties boarded up, but right now, they cannot get control of the properties without pursuing them through legal methods. So, um, it looks like things are moving along, hopefully. More to come with two new code enforcement officers, but they're doing a tremendous job under difficult circumstances at best to handle all of those cases between two individuals. That's a lot of work. And if you haven't been to any of these properties, to actually see how much they have to go through, it's quite lengthy and time-consuming to make sure everything is done correctly and adequately, to make sure they have a good case when they go to court if it requires that. And we know the court is somewhat backlog. We're hoping that that will improve as well, but the better these things can be written up, the more likely they are to be handled and addressed immediately instead of having to make multiple court appearances. So, that was the report. And, um, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Brett, you have any further safety?
Yeah. We have the same resolution financed it to hire the domestic violence advocate that was approved. Also had a resolution to install one new one hundred and fifty watt equivalent LED light fixture at the following location, BPU pole three eight two five five on Van Deren Street. We had a request in here in this body. That was approved. Under information reports, we have a special event coming up. The Jamestown, New York jingle and mingle and jingle parade and winter festival will be held on Saturday, December second, from ten AM until nine PM, including setup and teardown on Third Street. The live music games for kids, the parade, fireworks will follow, the tree lighting as usual. That was approved. The chief coon announced that we had four firefighters graduate last week and are now considered on probation. Did hire five, but one did not complete the training and submitted a letter of resignation. And was also announced that a civil service exam for firefighters was posted last week. So, we have openings here, the FEMA positions. We did hire three there. We'll be hiring more. That test will be held in January, so anybody who would like to become a Jamestown firefighter, be signed up for the exam. People. That was all.
I have a question for you. The life requested, I requested at Newland and Halleck, they have requested after having a meeting with the people from the church about the concern about safety of the youth group and people exiting that building, they would like to meet with someone from the BPU and probably it wouldn't hurt to have someone from Public Safety. They would like someone to come after dark so that they can see what they're discussing and try to get the best proposal forward as to what's needed in that area. It's very dark and I, when I, I called them to follow up on it, they indicated when I said, do you want it facing the street? Do you want it facing the parking lot? Because the question came up about the cost, they weren't really sure and were looking to the BPU and Public Safety, I guess, maybe to look at it, to advise them what the best approach would be and to, so they can see what they're describing at night when it's, then we lit on that street. If that can happen, I don't know what it will take to get that, but that's what they're requesting now, so.
Jen, we didn't have no report back from BPU, have we?
No, we have followed up with them, we asked.
But she did ask me what the approach was. Did they want it facing the lot or did they want it facing the street? Because the next nearest pole light is on the other side of Halleck and it doesn't really light that area before you approach Halleck coming, going west. So, I think that's the issue, it's dark coming up the cliff.
The driveway there is like that?
The driveway is right there that exits on to Newland.
Yep, we can do that.
I forgot to bring up, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just said that's what they would like to arrange. I got a call before the meeting, so I didn't get a chance, but they would like more counsel on it to what the best approach is.
I forgot to bring up during Public Safety, I just wanted to thank Chief Jackson and the men and women at the police department. There was an issue over in my ward for two days salad. There was an individual that was operating a minibike on the public highway through several blocks. And this went on for two days. There was a phone call made and actually, he's in the room here now. Officer Johansson arrived along with another officer and they took care of the problem and, and towed the minibike and, and solved the problem. So, kudos to Chief Jackson and the men and women that took care of the issue.
We didn't have, uh, no resolutions for us. We just discussed, uh, Mark informed us that the leaf picked up that, uh, they've made one round and the weather's cooperating and, and they're gonna start their second round right away.
The weather, yeah?
Yeah.
Second round.
Yeah, the second round right away. So, they're making great headway and have not been hampered by any snow yet, so things are going good there.
That's pretty good, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for the drinks.
Yeah. I lived a fifteen-day, I didn't see any snow.
All right, you said it twice, don't say it again.
But that's about, that's about all we have.
Really?
About three.
Before we go to the mayor, just a reminder that next Monday, the twentieth, yeah, twentieth, public hearing for the budget will be at six thirty, six thirty, uh, in council chambers. Uh, and also, I don't know if there was any desire to stay for any type of work session on that.
What I'm going to ask is that any council member who has suggestions to the budget, please don't leave until the last minute and try and get them to me by Friday, so I can compile something. And I guess then we'll see. I don't know what else to tell you. As of right now, I say I have nothing to discuss, cause I don't have anything from anybody.
Okay. We would have to, we would have to have a
Yeah, there would have to be seventy-two hours, I guess.
So, special meeting. Then how about by Thursday morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
If you can have them to me by Thursday morning, that would be awesome.
Otherwise, we just, all we can do is the hearing, we wouldn't be able to do a special meeting unless we have it posted. Right? Very good? Uh, I guess it's your turn, anything you've got?
I have no items, actually. Go Bills.
All right, well, let's see. Right now, what do we got?
Don't say it.
Still three nothing.
Snow on Saturday, just saying, cause that's what Randy just said.
How dare people.
Said it three times, we're done.
Okay.